Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, February 12th, 2025 School Committee Meeting. Superintendent, could we have a roll call?
Mr. McGolli.
President.
President.
Mr. Gattro.
President.
Mrs. Hubley.
President.
Mrs. Lebo.
President.
Mrs. Perdius.
President.
May I approach?
President.
Quincy High School Student Representative, Mishy Malavia.
And North Quincy High School Student Representative, Calvert Lee.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent.
Thank you. Tonight, we have three memoriams. If you could please keep in your thoughts and prayers the following individuals and their families, former Quincy Public Schools employees. The first is Gail Morganelli, 14 years as a secretary at Quincy High School and then at North Quincy High School. Next is Rita Niedel, special education teacher at Atherton Howe Elementary School for 17 years. And last is Richard Dick Veller, IT staff member here in the main office and all over the district for 24 years. If you could keep these individuals and their families in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to be opening the open forum section. This is an opportunity for community input regarding Quincy Public Schools. Community in this context is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a non-resident parent of a student who attends the Quincy Public Schools, or a non-resident employee of the Quincy Public Schools. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than three minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exceed their time or yield to others. Residents or non-community persons may submit written statements of up to 300 words to the school committee at QSCopenforum@quinsypublicschools.com by 4:00 p.m. on the day prior to the posted school committee regular meeting. Written statements may be posted on the school committee section of the Quincy Public Schools' website by noon on the day of the posted school committee regular meeting. And just to confirm that the three-minute timeline will be honored, mostly just to make sure that we're making sure everyone has the same amount of time and we're not favoring anyone in giving more time than others. So if you have something you want to say, please come on up.
Hi, my name is Shivpreet Singh, 511 Hancock Street. I'm here to support Lunar New Year as a holiday in the QPS calendar. So this is my statement. I start from a personal experience. I was born in a Sikh family and completed my education through grade 12 at a Catholic school. I'm married to someone who practices the Hindu faith and I now reside in North Quincy, where the community celebrates Lunar New Year. Growing up in India, we embraced each other's festivals as our own. We fostered a sense of unity with, which fostered a sense of unity within our community. We celebrated Diwali, Holy Eid, Christmas, as if they are our personal festivals. And now I celebrate Lunar New Year in the same spirit. The reason I share this is to emphasize that sharing culture is the most amazing way to build a robust, connected, happy community. Festivals are the easiest way to connect and de-stress the community. We are not benefiting anyone by keeping the school open on a day when 50% of one of the high school population is absent. It does not help the community, the students, the teachers, or even the taxpayers. In closing, my question to the school committee is this: Do we want to build a happier, more integrated community, or do we wish to foster divisions and distrust by pitting one culture against another? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Jorge Garcia. I live on Lady McGrath, about a block that way. My wife and I have lived here in Quincy for 12 years. I'm a veteran teacher with 12 years of experience, who's had the honor of doing my student teaching at North Quincy. My eight-year-old child attends our DLC and has been part of Quincy Public Schools since he began school. I'm here because I want to make sure that members of this committee and the members of our community are aware of the potential impact of recent decisions by the federal government. Literally yesterday, Elon Musk, who purports to be a government employee and has seized control of the dispersment mechanisms of the United States government, has stated that he intends to eliminate the Department of Education. As you are all aware, our school district receives funds that come from the federal government through the Department of Education, especially when it comes to students who have disabilities. Given that Mr. Musk has already used that control to eliminate various federal funds, we can only take this threat seriously. Furthermore, the current administration has made it clear that it views all children with disabilities with a certain amount of hostility, as addition to viewing transgender children and undocumented children with hostility. Fundamentally, all of the children in this community deserve our protection and our love. It is my hope that this board will take ownership, and that's as leaders this community needs and deserves, to ensure that all of our children receive the education that is their constitutional right, as well as their right as a human being. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carly Britton. I live in Ward Four. I've been in Quincy for almost 20 years, I think, and I have two children in the Quincy Public Schools. I'm just here to voice my support for adding the Lunar New Year as a holiday and a day off for Quincy Public Schools. I think it's an important recognition of our community, and it will model inclusion, inclusive behavior to our children. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Sorensen-Alawad. I live at Two Rude Street and have two children in Quincy Public Schools. I'm here as an ally to Quincy's Asian families in support of Lunar New Year. Lunar New Year, as a school and city holiday, has become an emotionally charged issue for our community, especially those of us who have been advocating for it for an officially-recognized holiday for the past four years. And for you, members of the school committee, who have stood in opposition, you've indicated you don't even want to talk about this issue anymore and are looking to make a policy change so we can't. We all know we have several schools, including North Quincy High, that have over 50% of students identifying as Asian. We saw a huge increase in absences on Lunar New Year recently across the city, demonstrating the importance and significance of this holiday. As elected members of the school committee, you are beholden to us, your constituents who voted you in. We are the parents, guardians, caregivers, family members, and alumni of QPS. We have spoken and voiced our desire to add Lunar New Year to the calendar in polls, letters, emails, and open forums like this one, time and time again. So I ask those of you especially who have consistently voted no to please hear us, be responsive to us, and agree to add Lunar New Year to the calendar as an official holiday. The time has come. Thank you.
Hi, Carly. 42 President's Ave. Good evening, Mayor Mary Koch, Vice Chair Cahill, Policy Chair Gattro, and fellow school committee members. I have two children in Quincy Public School, one in Lincoln Hancock and one in Southwest Middle School, where I serve as PTO president. My parents and I left our homeland when we were, where we celebrated weeks-long Lunar New Year. I grew up in a New York City Chinatown, class sizes of 30, made up of 90% Chinese. Lunar New Year was not a day off back then, and perhaps one or two classmates missed school. We, my family, friends, and most of our schoolmates did not have the privilege to take that day off from school. Any day not working for my parents is the day they would not be paid. Does that mean we didn't celebrate? We celebrated at night, phone calls overseas, and on the weekends throughout Chinatown. That was back then. Now I have the privilege to address you, the school committee. Times are different now. There were stats shared where over half of North Quincy High and substantial numbers of our students in other schools absent on Lunar New Year. I applaud the teachers and school staff for maintaining a positive learning environment under those circumstances. I can't imagine what North Quincy High was like with half of the students missing. Based on one of the school committee meetings that sat in on back in October, the students missing school are likely our best performers. Can you imagine your workplace where half of your best performers are out on that day? Quincy has a large Asian population and gives us a unique opportunity to share our culture with others in the city and beyond. We have the upcoming Lunar New Year Festival held at North Quincy High. And also, I'm delighted to see Lunar New Year and its tradition shared in the schools via lion dances, where some of it's being funded by the PTO, along with other activities. So thanks to the city for putting together the Lunar New Year Festivals and PTO groups who are seen, and we appreciate you. New York State signed Lunar New Year as a public school holiday back in 2023. Prior to that, New York City led the way in 2015. I understand New York City did it in an innovative way by combining two half-school days to make that happen. Perhaps that's something worth exploring if there's a concern about extending the school year. Do we need an official holiday to celebrate the Lunar New Year in Quincy? Mary Koch and the city councilors made their view clear in 2024. They voted unanimously yes. PTOs stepped up, providing funding for lion dances. Now the school committee is on deck, and I hope you can bring this home. Thank you for your time and the leadership you provide for our students and teachers.
Anyone else?
Hi, I have some paper to pass out, if I may.
I'll pass them. I'll pass them off. Go ahead, you can start speaking.
Good evening. Grace Young-Jay, 6 Florence Street. I've passed out some paper, and I'd like to share this data from this paper, which are the districts that recognize Lunar New Year as a holiday. It's broken down into multiple categories, and I'd like to draw your attention to category one, which is in green, as you can see on the left-hand side. These districts recognize Lunar New Year as a full holiday. There are nine in total, Lexington being the biggest Asian population. Others in this category include Westford, Acton, Boxborough, Hopkinton, Brookline, New Inn, Wellesley, Wayland, and Boston. My point is Quincy has a larger percentage of Asians in its district than eight of the nine in this category. Therefore, I believe it is time for us to move Lunar New Year in a full holiday, to a full, I'm sorry, to a full holiday and join this list of category one. Thank you.
My name is Chuklae, 24 Clive Street. I just wanted to express my disappointment with QPS. On January, I believe, 29th was the Lunar New Year celebration. There was no communication from QPS vaguely, if you celebrate, let us know. But many parents did not know that they could take the day off. And so I believe that I had come to you at the beginning of the month, asking that there is clear communication to let families know that it is a day that students can take off to celebrate their holiday. That didn't happen. There was a lot of confusion. Also, data was shared on Quincy Moms, and they showed that half of the population at North Quincy High School had taken the day off. Many of them are actually non-Asian-American, because they know that when they go into the classroom, similar to last year, there would only be one or two students there. So again, a waste of resources, heating, janitor, custodian work, teachers. That is a disappointment to me, because I did preemptively ask you to do that, and that didn't happen. I also want to applaud all of the students' advocacy. I spoke to many, many students, and they were actually the ones that spoke to their friends, who told them their friends that they have been supporting the parents who've been standing out here, because they're at home doing homework. But they believe that they should also have the day off, and they advocated, and they spoke to their friends, they shared on so many social media, so that they encouraged their friends to take the day off, so that we have numbers to show you that this matters to them. So it's not just a bunch of Asian-American parents here saying, "Let us take the day off." Students are also saying it, and they're advocating for it. So I do hope that the numbers that you're seeing is showing that the students are standing up for something. My fourth grader is telling his friends to take the day off because it is their holiday. My eighth grader is telling their friends to take the day off because it is their holiday. So, and all of them, they are, their friends do believe that it is a holiday. Many schools in the city of Quincy are also celebrating Lunar New Year by doing lion dancing, because the teachers and the school staff understand the significant, the importance of this holiday. So teachers, students, everybody seems to understand the significance of it, but it seems that the school committee doesn't seem to understand that. So I'm not sure why they're not matching, right? And also, we've been fighting this for four years, and we want you to advocate for the community, 30% Asian-American. So four years of asking for this, and I don't believe that you would even be following or listening and doing this, but I'm going to be continuing to fight. Now, with what's going on with our nation, our vulnerable immigrant students, how are you going to be protecting our students and keeping them safe from other things? So please think about that.
Thank you.
Good evening, member of the school Quincy School Committee. My name is Tui Leung. I live on Huntley Row, and I have three children in the public school, Quincy Public School. I stand before you tonight, not just as a parent, but as someone asking you to understand the importance of Lunar New Year for thousands of family in Quincy. For many years, my children have gone to school on Lunar New Year. Last year, my son Tyler, a third grader, told me he didn't want to miss school, because he didn't want to fall behind. My older son Evan worry about a quiz. They were proud to have absence, they were proud to have no absences on their report cards, but at what cost? They had to choose between their education and their family's most important holiday. This year, I made a different choice. I let them stay home. And for the first time, we had a real Lunar New Year together. The night before, we sat around the table with their grandparents, sharing a long, warm meal, no rush, no homework, no worrying about the school the next day. The next morning, my children woke up filled with excitement, just like kids do on New Year morning, I mean, on Christmas morning, knowing that they will be gathering with their family, open their lese or home bao, full of money, and take part in tradition that bring them joy. That's what Lunar New Year means to us. It's just not another day. It's family, it's history, it's identity. I ask you to think about what Christmas morning feels like, the excitement, the tradition, the deep sense of family and togetherness. That's what Lunar New Year means to so many families in Quincy. And for those who choose to attend school that day, it's not just a wasted resource. For those who choose to attend school that day, it's not just a wasted resource or an unproductive day when half the class is missing. It disrupts learning, leaving teachers unable to move forward with lessons. Schools are open but functioning at half-capacity. No child should feel guilty for celebrating their culture. No parents should have to choose between education and family. Recognizing Lunar New Year as a school holiday isn't about taking a day off, it's about acknowledging the reality of our city today. 40% of Quincy students are Asian. This is their Christmas morning, their Thanksgiving, their time to celebrate the tradition that define who they are. It's time to make Lunar New Year a recognized school holiday. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is that it? Okay. Thank you. Superintendent?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is doing well. The superintendent's report, the first item agenda is our QPS registration for the 2025-2026 school year is now open for kindergarten in grades one through 12. Registration information can be found under the Family tab on the Quincy Public Schools' website. At your places are the preliminary QPS enrollment projections for the 2025-2026 school year. On the chart, each school is color-coded, green, yellow, and red. Schools highlighted in red are at or above the building's capacity, and so open enrollment will be very limited at these schools. Schools highlighted in yellow have some grades with high enrollment and other grades that have available seats. Schools highlighted in green have availability in most or all grades. Enrollment projections highlighted in beige are the most likely to change, as the majority of new registrations are typically for pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, grades one, six, and nine. Part of the purpose of sharing this information with you tonight is to highlight open enrollment, and particularly North Quincy High School. With the growth in enrollment over the last few years and the fact that registration for next year is just beginning, open enrollment decisions will be made in July for all grade levels, so we have the most accurate information possible about the number of available seats. North Quincy High School is extremely tight and really at capacity already. So in previous years, obviously, the high school families were notified in February, but I think this year it's very important for us to take the time to make sure that our numbers are extremely accurate before informing parents of the ability to either have acceptance and open enrollment, or unfortunately, not have the ability for open enrollment. And these are the numbers that are obviously before you, and North Quincy, you know, is the most concerning in red. Of course, the exceptions to this are the students who are open enrollment siblings of students already enrolled at both high schools, and those individuals and families have been notified that they can attend with their siblings, as is in keeping with school committee policy. And this will also be completed in March for siblings entering kindergarten in grade six. We will present a further update, of course, of enrollment and projections before the end of the school year, but I wanted you to be aware of where we stand currently with regard to our open enrollment numbers. And, you know, we continue to grow. And if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Oh, I do want to thank, obviously, Laura Owens as well for compiling this information. Laura does an excellent job with regard to managing the open enrollment and open enrollment invitations, and I do want to thank Laura for this, because it is a very huge task, and it is very detailed, and Laura is, obviously, does an excellent job with that.
Thank you, Mrs. Cahill. Also to second Mr. Malvi's commendation of Laura's great work on this front, for sure. I just was hoping that maybe we could, just a suggestion, as we're going into accepting open enrollment requests for North Quincy versus Quincy, if we could just communicate that to parents a little bit better, that I know for a long time, it was pretty much a given that you could get into either high school that you wanted to, and I think it's, even though it's always been subject to availability, I think it's just because it's been so long that it used to be an easy choice to kind of get into either one. If we could just articulate to parents and something home that just says, if you do want to go to another high school, you have to, you have to ask for that, and it is subject to space availability, just to, again, bring parents, again, I know it's not a new policy, but just to remind them. If we could do that through Aspen or through maybe the community newsletters that Mrs. Owen sends out.
Sure.
That would be great. Thank you.
Superintendent, I know you and I have talked a little bit about this, but it is part of the enrollment issue, and as we've seen the high schools grow in number, my concern has been those students that ought not to be in our district, that are living somewhere else. And I know that's challenging and difficult for the team, but I want to make sure you have the resources to do that. We know that the District of the North struggles, and people try to get into our schools, and, you know, we're pretty full, and I want to make sure that we are maintaining that effort to keep it for Quincy kids.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor, and of course, you and this committee have been very supportive with regard to giving us the resources to make that happen. Of course, we do that primarily through our school attendance officers. We have a full complement of three, plus an additional resource through the sheriff's office to help us with the school visits, and just the day-to-day review of all attendance data to make sure that every student and family, to the best of our ability, are living in the city and resting their head at night in the city, as the law requires, and therefore eligible to attend the Quincy Public Schools. It is a large task, and I do have to thank all of our attendance officers, and of course, all the SLT and all the, and the principals, and really all the staff that help with regard to monitoring this. But we do work very hard at making sure that everyone attends the Quincy Public Schools, are residents of the city of Quincy, and we'll continue to keep working at it. And unfortunately, we do have situations where we do have to ask students and families to register in their hometown, if they don't live in the city, and that happens pretty regularly, whether that's at initial registration or after a lack of residency is discovered during the course of the year. So those tough decisions do have to happen, and we understand why they have to happen. But I do want to assure you, the mayor, and the committee, that we are working hard to make sure that every student that lives in the, that is attending the Quincy Public Schools lives in the city.
Thank you. To Mrs. Perdius, a statement of what we could do to communicate to parents, I was just curious what we currently do do to traditionally to communicate this type of information to parents.
So we do, we do communicate, but...
So there's a page on the, there's a page on the website that details open enrollment and the process for open enrollment, and at this point, the families who have already completed open enrollment requests, we can notify those families that we're postponing the decision to July. So I have email addresses for everybody who has already requested open enrollment to date. We don't solicit open enrollment requests, like, we don't advertise, you know, that open enrollment's there, but traditionally, we have not advertised it.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else? Oh, Mr. McGolli.
At the high school level in particular, those who do not get their open enrollment requests honored are leaving the district, and they're going to private schools. So I don't know how we can get around that, but just letting you know what the facts are there.
I haven't seen that happen. I can tell you... Maybe some individual cases of that, but we haven't seen that in large numbers, but we can, we can provide you with that data with regard to open enrollment requests and whether or not they continue to attend school in Quincy. That's certainly data we can provide you.
Okay. Next.
All set?
Yes.
Next is North Quincy High School's NES Collaborative Conference Report, which shared with school committee and their packet. which shared with school committee in their packets. Of course, next steps for the school is to review and implement the findings and recommendations, as well as develop a plan for future growth. Two of the key areas that, of course, North Quincy will be working on is making sure that they present a view of the North Quincy graduate that's very similar to what Quincy High was tasked with doing. So North Quincy High is very confident that they will be able to accomplish that task fairly easily. Basically, a description of what the North Quincy High School graduate looks like. And of course, the other aspect is just the alignment of our curriculum maps. As you know, we continue to work on those, and that is a similar issue that was at Quincy High. And North Quincy High is making great strides in making sure that their curriculum maps are aligned and that any other concerns relative to the curriculum at North Quincy is being compiled with, with regard to the NEAS recommendations. You'll see that with regard to the rest of the report, North Quincy High School has, with Quincy High School is doing very, very well with that report, but the, the work continues. And of course, there'll be a follow-up visit. And of course, NEAS will typically reach out to school committee as well and invite you to be a part of the process, as they did with Quincy High. And we appreciate your participation in that event. But everyone is on target, and we expect to meet all of the NEAS recommendations and requirements so that we reach accreditation by the end of the two-year process.
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Gilbert and his staff at North Quincy. This report is full of amazing things that they're doing right and doing well. And just the level of detail that the NEAS staff went through, areas they looked at, and just, they were really detailed in their, their comments and just a lot of really great things there that they should be really proud of. So I just wanted to congratulate them. And though there is some, there are some things to work on, I, I think this is positive, and I think this is really great. So I just want to congratulate them.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Next is upcoming Quincy Public Schools and City of Quincy events. They include the following. The middle school STEM fairs will be held starting the last week of February and continuing through March. School committee will be sent calendar invitations for these important events, showcasing, of course, the STEM fair projects of all of our students. The next parent academy on Behavioral Health Navigator will be held on Tuesday, March 4th, at 6:00 p.m. on Zoom and feature one of our local community partners. The previous presentation highlighted the Quincy Public Schools' collaboration with Quarry and will be shared on the QPS website under our District Academic Programs tab. So we want to thank Quarry for their participation in that event and, of course, everything Quarry does for us throughout the school year. They're a great partner. Next is the Adam Speaker Series continues on March 4th at 5:30 p.m. at Quincy High School with a program on the impact of U.S. First Ladies on American presidential and global history, specifically Quincy's own Abigail Adams and Louisa Catherine Adams. So this should be a great event, and I hope everyone will attend. The third annual Remember the Ladies event will be held on March 8th at 2:00 p.m. at Quincy High School. Each year, five women from the Quincy community are recognized with the Abigail Adams Award. This year, Quincy Public Schools has two recipients. The first is Leslie Britson, of course, our amazing homeless coordinator that you all know, and she does so much for our students and families with regard to homelessness in the city. And we can't thank Leslie enough for everything she does. And of course, I'm honored to also let you know that our very own Laura Owens is also being recognized and awarded for everything, everything Laura does, day in and day out, so many different hats. But we thank Laura for her dedication, not only to the Quincy Public Schools, but also to the city of Quincy. So congratulations, Laura, and we look forward to attending that event. And previous QPS recipients, of course, include Assistant Superintendent Dr. Erin Perkins, Principal Courtney Mitchell, and former school committee member Barbara Isola as well. So again, we're looking forward to that event and honoring all of the, the great honorees. Lastly, I just want to add, I, along with Dr. Perkins, Special Education Director Julie Graham, Principal Carrie Conley, and Assistant Principal Simone Buckley gave a tour of the Richard de Cristofaro, Richard de Cristofaro Learning Center to the Randolph Superintendent today and her team in order to explore the possibility of tuitioning students into the Learning Center. As you know, we've already begun doing that with two students from Weymouth. Randolph is extremely, extremely interested. They have 32 students on the waiting list for programming, similar to what they would need and would be serviced for at the Richard de Cristofaro Learning Center, RDLC. So the superintendent and her team were extremely impressed with the facility. They would like to invite their own school committee members to see it so that they can show this center as an example for hopefully doing something in their own community in a similar way because they understand not only the impact it's going to have on their special education students, but also the impact on the economic aspect of being able to maintain the massive tuitions that are associated with special education, especially with the potential looming cuts in those areas. So the superintendent wanted to express, from Randolph, wanted to express, you know, her, her great, somewhat surprised at how great the facility was put together with every detail that was done in order to support our students. She was really amazed by it and is hopeful in our collaboration and partnership for tuitioning students into the district. So thank you to, to the Randolph Public Schools for that. With that, that concludes the superintendent's report.
And I just want to say, you know, we should thank the mayor, the city council, the administrative team, you, Mrs. Park, Dr. Perkins, and her team for making that happen.
Absolutely.
You know, Randolph wants to make it happen, but it's a huge investment. It's, it's vision, and we're lucky enough to have the support to do that. So that didn't happen because of us as much as it happened because of the support of the city.
That's true.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Next on the agenda, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Hubley? Is that?
I just wanted to make a comment that it's great that the Randolph School Committee members want to come and view, one of the Randolph School Committee members is actually a North Quincy High School graduate.
Oh, really? Interesting. So that makes sense.
Mr. Ankles, Ankles, I think is his last name. Jamie is his first name.
Yeah, we'll be signing it up soon.
A North Quincy High grad.
Oh, that's good to know. Thank you for that.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have old business. Mr. Gatto, let me get you on the mic. And the first on the agenda is the proposed revision to the Committee Policy Book, Section 9115, High School Promotion and Graduation Requirements. We haven't, we just have to vote, right? We're not having a presentation, so.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Gatto?
I just want to say the, we have four items that were in the policy committee over the last couple of months. We've had deliberations in the three-member policy committee. All were voted out. They've sat before the school committee. We've had dialogue, discussion. They're eligible for vote tonight, so on the first matter. Madam Vice Chair, the, the promotion and graduation requirements, I ask for a motion to accept.
Motion, Mrs. Lebo. Second, Mrs. Hubley. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Begoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gatto.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo. Mrs. Perdius.
Yes.
And Mayakoke.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
We just, we need a, I believe we need a vote to waive and suspend the school committee policy 2.5, 2.6, which would... So that it can be implemented immediately?
Yes.
Roll call.
Motion for a second, roll call.
Mr. Begoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gatto.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Perdius.
Yes.
And Mayakoke.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Second item is a proposed revision of the school committee policy book, Section 9.2, School Year School Calendar. It is eligible for a roll call vote. I ask for a motion.
Second, Mrs. Lebo. Roll call vote.
Mr. Begoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gatto.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Perdius.
Yes.
And Mayakoke.
Yes.
Third item is on the QPS School Year Calendar for 2025-2026. It was voted out of committee. Ask for a motion. Motion by Mrs. Hubley. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Lebo.
On the motion, please. Mrs. Perdius?
Thank you. So I'd like to propose an amendment to my colleagues tonight. On this calendar that's before us tonight, Lunar New Year, as we know, falls during February break. So having a conversation about school versus no school is sort of a moot point for this current calendar we're looking at right here. But in the meantime, what I'd like to propose is an acknowledgement to all the people that have spoke before us this year on the topic and to all of our Asian-American students and families, something that says to them, we see you, we respect you, we appreciate you. So I'd like to propose that we change the letter V to a letter H for Tuesday, February 17th, 2026.
I second that motion.
We need a roll call vote?
We do.
On the memo, yep.
Mr. Begoli? Mrs. Cahill?
No.
Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
No.
Mrs. Lebo?
No.
Mrs. Perdius?
Yes.
Mayakoke?
Yes.
So now, motion, yeah, the motion does not pass, so we, we have the calendar before us to take a vote.
Do we need a motion to vote on that?
I think we already had a motion and a second.
Yep.
So it's just a roll call vote on that.
Mr. Begoli?
Yeah. We want to, on the motion, we want to have a, some conversations.
I'd just like to say something.
I really want the community to, to understand that I have been listening, and I have some significant concerns. Because when I look at the, the number of people who took Lunar New Year as a cultural holiday this year at the elementary level, 4,645 students in our elementary schools, 149, or 3.2, took it as a cultural holiday. That means the parents of 4,496 elementary school students would have had to find childcare if they weren't stay-at-home moms or dads. And that's who I'm thinking about when I vote for this calendar. I'm thinking about the population that would have to provide some sort of supervision. That's also the, the lower middle school grades. A high school student wants to take a day off, that is fine. Nobody has to be watching them. But 4,496, parents of 4,496 elementary age students would have had to find childcare or someplace for their kids to go if we had made that a holiday this year. And so I'm very, very concerned about that. My other, my other concern is that I've read all the letters that came in, listened to everyone speak. I know we've been celebrating Lunar New Year in the city for 37 years. I would say Quincy High School has been doing a cultural holiday, a cultural fair for longer than that, every single year having a cultural fair. And I think that when you share it, when you go, when you, when you go away for the day, you're not really sharing that holiday with your community. Everybody else gets a day off, but they're not celebrating. I picked up kids from elementary schools on Lunar New Year, and they all came out with something that they had celebrated that day in the school with their classmates, with them. They weren't Asian kids, they were, they were celebrating with Asian kids, but they were, they were all celebrating together. But if we make it a holiday, then the Asian-American students go home. Everybody stays home, they celebrate, but there's no, there's no feeling of the celebration for the rest of the community. It's really not being shared. So I feel that their heritage is really recognized in our schools. Case in point, the lion dance, I saw it at North Quincy High School. It was amazing. And a couple of letters said, all, all of our families should be valued. I agree with that. All of our families should be valued, all of them. I don't think we should pick and choose which ones we're valuing, and we should be sharing cultural festivals, and that's what we do. We share cultural festivals. So I'm, I'm a little insulted when people say that we don't recognize these people or this whole population, but I think I have to worry about those 4,496 parents of those kids who would have to find one more, one more way to take care of their children if they were working. And that was, that was a half day, and still only 149 kids took it as a cultural holiday. So it doesn't look like it's a big thing to me in the elementary schools. So that's where I stand on this.
Just a response to that, I, for Election Day, that was a new day off last year or the year before, and that had virtually no conversation at this table about childcare. So I just want to put it out there that this, we have done days off like that without worrying about that and without having 55% of our kids out of Quincy.
Case in point, the reason we did it on Election Day was for the safety of all of the elementary school children because that's where the voting was taking place, and that's where accidents were happening.
Just saying, the rules can't change depending on the holiday.
It was for the safety of the elementary school students.
Motion's been made and seconded, correct?
No. I want to say something. I am like, Mrs. Lebo, I have to read my comments. So the school committee has heard from many who support making Lunar New Year a school holiday as a way to recognize and acknowledge the Asian-American community in our district. Tonight, I want to share my view on why I voted against this proposal. On January 29th, 2025, the official start of Lunar New Year, of the 9,873 students in our district, 1,040 students took advantage of the policy for allowing for an excused absence to celebrate the holiday with their families. This policy applies to all the holidays that our students in the Quincy Public Schools celebrate. In contrast, on that day, nearly 8,000 students were in school, and many had the opportunity to celebrate and share in Lunar New Year traditions and to learn about its cultural significance in the Asian community. That is almost 80% of our student population. Both scenarios, in my opinion, observe the Lunar New Year with awareness and respect for the importance of that day. On a personal note, my grandparents immigrated to this country from Italy with my 10-year-old mother and her younger siblings. All of them were non-English speakers. Unlike today, there were very few resources for my mother and her sisters to help them navigate school or for her parents to communicate with teachers. My mother's only translator at the time was an Italian girl from Sicily who was in her class and who she barely understood because due to the fact that they had different Italian dialects. I'm sure my mother's academic experience would have been vastly different had she received the depth of support that the Quincy Public School provides our students and families today. The Quincy Public School District demonstrates its commitment to diversity every single day through ELL classes, family liaisons, translation services, and parent academies. These are examples of the significant supports available to our students and families. This is how we genuinely acknowledge, respect, and more importantly, invest in our diverse student population. Cultural and religious holidays are a beautiful way to gather family and friends in order to observe, honor, and preserve a family's heritage and traditions. The policy of excused absences allows all of our families the opportunity to do just that. Like many immigrant families who came to this country, my family worked really hard to build a better life in America, and my parents and grandparents made it a point to keep us connected to our Italian roots. To those advocating for Lunar New Year as a school holiday, to my friends in the Asian community, and to all the families in our system, please know that my vote is not a lack of recognition. As a second-generation American, I understand firsthand the challenges of assimilating into a new country while continuing to honor our culture and our heritage. However, I firmly believe that our responsibility as school committee members is not to establish holidays, but to advocate for what happens in our classrooms and to give all of our students in our district the tools that they need to achieve academic success. And I'm going to end with this. Our school committee's mission statement is as follows. The purpose of the school committee is to establish policies and make decisions on the basis of educational philosophy and goals, the most crucial of these being facilitating the optimal learning experience of the children enrolled in our Quincy Public Schools. And I am using that statement as my guide when I vote. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gatto?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Perdius?
No.
Mayakoke?
No.
No.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have to vote on the, yep.
Yeah, we have one additional item from the Policy Committee. It's School Committee Meeting Calendar 2025-2026. We discussed it, it's eligible for a vote. I ask for a motion.
Motion, Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mrs. Lebo.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Taggatro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Perdius?
Yes.
And Mayakove?
Yes.
Okay, new business. Dove Collaboration with Quincy Public Schools, Ms. Bolton and Mr. Tagliari.
Good to go.
You're welcome. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayakove. Vice Chair Cahill, members of the school committee, Superintendent Mulvey. I welcome the pleasure to share about a longstanding collaboration that we have with Dove. Seated with me at the table is the newly-minted Executive Director of Dove, Mick Hirsch, Jen Bolton, who is the Director of Prevention and Education, and Kelly Trung, who is a Youth Speak Specialist with us. As you know, Quincy Public Schools benefits greatly by all the contributions of our local businesses and organizations. And let me just say that Dove is just a terrific model of an organization that really makes direct contact with our kids and makes a significant impact. They have peer-led initiatives, their involvement with training student leaders is amazing. And their collaboration with our health teachers to provide direct instruction to our students in middle and high school, all for the purpose of promoting healthy relationships. It's just a remarkable partnership that we have. And let me just say, our students know who Jen Bolton is. Our students know who Kelly Trung is. And it really just speaks to the relationships that they've forged over these years. So we're so grateful for this partnership. I believe I was going to pass it to Jen.
Yeah.
Or pass it right to the new Executive Director, Mick Hirsch, and to, you know, give you some more details and some highlights of what's happened over the past year. Thank you.
Good evening. Again, my name is Mick Hirsch. And two weeks ago to the day, I became a proud resident of Quincy, living now at 285 Hancock Street. I came to Quincy, as was stated, to become the new Executive Director of Dove, which is such a fine organization. Dove provides direct social services, housing and economic empowerment, and legal services to the region. We also provide prevention education. And in just a moment, you'll hear from my colleagues from a presentation about the amazing work that they have been doing. I've been doing this work for over 20 years. And I have to say that in just the two weeks that I've been here, this is among the best, if not the best, staff that I have ever worked with. And I am so excited to embark on this journey with them. I also want to just underscore that I'm beginning my tenure during a month that is of very special importance to me. And that is Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. And I think that's such an important issue for our school systems. And my colleagues are now going to give a presentation and underscore that as well.
All right, good evening, everyone. So nice to see you all. Thank you for having us back. We have some slides here for you all, and I think you all have a copy of them as well. Most of you are familiar with what we do at Dove. We are very happy to continue this partnership. We have been connected to the public schools here for, beyond the time I've been with Dove, and I think probably close to 20 years. And so have really greatly been able to expand our partnership in the last couple of years because of the support from you all on the school committee. So we really appreciate that. I am a Quincy resident, my kids go to school at Atherton Howe. And this all feels very connected and very meaningful to be able to do this work and be in the community where we're talking to students about this really important issue. So Kelly's going to share a little bit of some of the elements of the Youth Speak program, and then we're going to share a little of what we did the last school year in each school.
Good evening, everyone. So first, I just want to talk about how prevalent teen dating violence is and the reason why some of our lessons are very important for this community. We have three big numbers here that I wanted to share. One in three young people will experience either an abusive or an unhealthy relationship within some point of their lifetime. Over 1.5 million teens each single year experience physical abuse from a dating partner. And then about 68% of teens experience some form of educational interference when they're in an intimate or abusive relationship with someone. So by educational interference, we're kind of talking about, for example, maybe a dating partner forcing them to drop out of clubs or activities they care about, maybe skipping school, or even things like changing post-grad plans in order for them to maintain power and control over that person. So these are some three big numbers that we want to share to show how important this issue is.
So some of the elements of the Youth Speak program, we have peer leader trainings that we do in schools where we work with guidance counselors to select students that are interested in diving deeper into this, being peer leaders in their school, peer educators, talking to other students about this issue. We do classroom presentations, faculty training. We offer parent support. Sometimes teachers connect us to parents that have students that are experiencing abusive relationships. We do awareness projects with students, and then we're also going to talk about the summer summits that we do.
So this here is kind of a breakdown of the different presentations we offer to each grade. So starting with sixth grade, we start off by introducing healthy and unhealthy friendships to them and kind of making the connection over to what is a healthy dating relationship and what are some characteristics to look out for. Moving on to the seventh grade, this is where we start to introduce the topic of healthy and unhealthy dating relationships. Here, we talk about the red flags of dating abuse and also how to support a friend and also get connected to resources in case they're experiencing a situation like that. Part two of seventh grade is where we aim to build skills for them to have a healthy relationship. And with this workshop, we focus on healthy communication skills and conflict resolution in order to maintain a healthy friendship or relationship. Moving on to the eighth grade, we also introduce some of the same topics here. And you will notice that part two and part three of the presentations are additional workshops to skill, to build other skills, such as consent. We also talk about how to have a healthy and safe breakup with a person. And then these topics are also reflected on the high school level, which is some changes that are more appropriate to their age group as well.
So the next few slides, we have numbers for each school. We won't read all the numbers, but we've been going into Quincy High School and talking to students during their long block. We did some peer leader trainings there. So I really benefited from the two health teachers there and kind of working with them on how to put this into their curriculum.
Okay. At North Quincy High, we have started a new model there for their training. So we are actually doing these full-day sessions with their students where we gather in the library, and we have about 50 students that go through a full day of training with us. So we talk about healthy relationships, breakups, consent. And we also bring in a survivor speaker as well. So these numbers are a reflection of our work with them last year. And we also held a six-week psychoeducational group that was meant to kind of further educate students about healthy relationships and other topics.
The next few slides, we have Atlantic Middle School. We had 44 presentations there to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Go to Broad Meadows, we had 31 classroom presentations. One of the biggest middle schools, or the biggest middle school. We reached 530 students last school year. We've really been able to develop close relationships with the health teachers at each school, which have been great in connecting us to students or to parents that might need more support. And has been really great to have Kelly, like, in this position for a long time. And like you said, students know her. And when we're out in the community, people are saying, like, "We know you, you came to our school." And so that kind of recognition, and students and families knowing that there is that support for them in the community. Oh, we got to the end there. Did we miss one? Okay. And then Point Webster, we had 28 classroom presentations, and Southwest, 27. Share some people?
So here, so at the end of each school year, we like to send out a survey to our school partners just to kind of assess our work within the community and see if they have any comments to share with us, any feedback. Here are some comments we have from some of our school partners here. I put the biggest one right in the center here. "Awesome work, what a fabulous group. Thanks so much for sharing this material with our kids and all you do for our community." And then on the following slide here, we have a couple pictures from what some of those full-day training sessions at North Quincy looked like. And these are quotes from our students that we trained, that we collected from evaluations. So which comment? I guess one comment I would probably bring out here is, you know, "I enjoyed the skits that were played out by our classmates. I also liked being able to spend time with my friends while learning about healthy relationships." So our goal in delivering these lessons is not only to have them be informative, but also for them to also be fun and engaging for students. That way, they can really build skills in a hands-on way and also be able to relate to the topic as well. This is a flyer from this past summer's Youth Advocate Summit. We hold this summit every single year. This year, we were lucky enough to actually have all of them in Quincy. Two of them actually first were held at Quincy High School in the President's Cafe. So these are the topics that we talk about during each summit. Everything from red flags. We also bring in guest speakers to talk about things like consent. And also, we discuss things like gender roles and stereotyping. And it's a very fun opportunity for them to gain community service experience, but also to build connections with other students who might be coming in from outside of Quincy as well.
Every year, these sell out, so we really enjoy doing them and have students that want to keep coming back, even if they've done it before.
One event I want to share that is, I think, a display of our wonderful connection to QPS is this panel that we held last February for Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. This panel actually featured four students from the Quincy Public School System. And this was an event where they basically shared more information about what dating as a teen is like today, just for adults and other people to know. And this was a really great conversation where these students come up with their own questions. They kind of asked each other, kind of like in a Q&amp;A format. And it was a very engaging and informative conversation as well.
And then the last couple of slides we have here are just pictures from the summer summits that we hold. So these are four-day-long, 20-hour summits where students from Quincy and North Quincy High School come together, spend a lot of time with them, building relationships, developing leadership skills, and really talking about what makes relationships healthy, unhealthy, how to help a friend, how to access resources in the community. If you all want to follow us on our Instagram page, Kelly puts a lot of this great content up there from stuff we do in Quincy. So this is our last slide. This is just what a continued partnership would mean. Presentations in all the middle schools and high schools in Quincy, continued leadership opportunities for students, onsite summits, relationship building and support for staff, and recognition of teen dating violence and how to prevent it. So thank you so much for having us back, and we love doing this work. We're very happy to do it in Quincy and really so value the support and partnership from the school committee. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for the partnership we have. You know, we're celebrating Act 400 this year, and a lot of Quincy firsts we were talking about in the course of the year. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the late Bill Delahunt, who was a congressman, but he was the district attorney being selected by Governor Ducaacus for the vacancy in 1975. One of his first priorities was to get going on something in place to deal with the domestic violence. Combined with Al Kramer at Quincy District Court, Chief Frank Finn at the Police Department, Joyce Baker and other members of the community stepped up to be founders of the Dove we home, home we know of today in the program. So, yeah, I know it was, those were the early days. But we ended up, the city of Quincy ended up on 60 Minutes because it was a first across the country. So I'm just proud of the city and its past and appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Go look that up.
I will. That's amazing. I'll use that.
Mr. Taggatro?
Thank you. I'd like to welcome Mick.
Thank you.
And welcome back, Jen and Kelly, and thank Jen and Kelly for their good work. Many years back, I was a city councilor in Quincy, and I got familiar with Dove and the good work and, you know, came to know Sue Chandler and Jen. It was privileged, I think it was 12 years ago, to briefly serve on Dove's board and really get to know the amazing work that you do. And 2018, '17, I got elected to the school committee. And when I got here, Mrs. Lebo and I shared a passion for the great work of Dove and what we thought was the importance of integrating Dove into QPS. And thanks to the support of the mayor and the school committee, as well as the superintendent and others, that partnership has really come to fruition and blossomed. And what you showed us tonight is exactly what I had hoped would be integrated in QPS when we originally talked about it. I'm super proud of the work that you're doing. I know that you're influencing so many different students, and, you know, you're improving relationships. And it's just going to have a lasting impact throughout a lifetime. And so what a great partnership in my eyes to have you here, and I hope it lasts a long time.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mrs. Lebo?
Thank you, Mrs. Cahill. Yeah, I want to reiterate what Mr. Taggatro said. And first of all, I also want to thank the mayor because we came to the mayor and said, "We need this fund." And as always, he steps up when he sees the need. And it is such, an interesting thing. I said, we had a presentation from Mara Papil earlier, and I said, "I didn't hear any mention of Dove." And she said, "Well, they're just us, they're us. They're us, they're all part of us. So that's why I might not have mentioned them, but they're always here, they're us." And so you have become a part of our school system, really an integral part of our school system. And the work you do is amazing. And I'm sure the kids do love them, because who couldn't? You know, really, who couldn't love them? They're just so warm and caring. We're very lucky, and the community's very lucky to have you here. I think, I'm very proud that Quincy was one of the other first in the city of Quincy that Quincy started this. And you have some big shoes to fill, Mick, so good luck. But it's a great organization in the city, too. You know, I love the, I like, I still call it Divas Dance for Dove.
Yes. We'll see you there.
It's not inviting boys a few years ago, but I still go with just girls. Divas Dance for Dove, so it's a great organization and always a moving night, always a moving night.
Thank you.
So thank you all, thank you all for your work.
Appreciate that.
Mrs. Hubley?
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here, and thank you for coming back year after year. We absolutely love having you, love having you in our schools. I have a question. So something very dear to me, been following, is trafficking issues. I recently saw an individual who gave a presentation who had been trafficked, who started off with a single-partner relationship, who went into an abusive relationship with this partner, who then became trafficked by this partner. And at this presentation, when she was giving her talk, the Foxborough Police were there, and they said this is becoming an issue there that they're recognizing and requesting help to come in and help them with this issue. Is this something at all that you touch upon in your education?
Yeah. So you're absolutely right that it so often starts with a, you know, dating relationship where it's two people that are dating and becomes that. So it's something that we have a guest speaker who's another Dove staff person that comes to the summits that we do over the summer. So we do a whole workshop with students on what human trafficking is, how it's not this necessarily, like, kidnapping, you know, scenario, and that it's more often someone starts dating someone and is coerced into that. And so how to help a friend, you know, how to notice those signs. But I think it's also something that we could possibly at the high school level be integrating into the classroom presentations, depending on interests or appropriateness.
And I'd just say that my professional background is I'm a trauma recovery specialist, and my expertise is in trafficking.
Oh, wonderful to hear. That's great. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mrs. Perdius?
Thank you, thank you. Just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and great work that you guys are doing. And we really appreciate the partnership and all your hard work. I'm just looking at the number of students that you're reaching at the middle schools, which is most, it seems like most of them. It seems, I was just looking actually at the superintendent's enrollment numbers to kind of compare them. But it looks like we're a little shy on hitting all the middle school kiddos. But the high school, how do we reach more of the high schools? Because it looks like there's about 364 at Quincy, 322 at North. But we have 1,500 kids at each school. So how do we reach more at the high schools?
Yeah. So we're presenting to all of one grade in high schools. And so I think at Quincy High, we're doing all of the sophomores. That's when they're cycling through health class. And so anyone that's in high school will, you know, for those four years, will... will, you know, for those four years, will cycle through a program with us. And then, at North Quincy, it's a similar format where they're, it's in their health class. And so, we have been talking about how we can offer workshops that are just available to all students so that they can get additional content outside of their health class, and of course, they're welcome to attend summits. But yes, it would be wonderful to have another touch point in high school.
That would be great. I think a lot of this stuff, you know, having one middle schooler and two high schoolers, I feel like it hits home in high school, right? A lot of this stuff, you know, might be very applicable to some of the middle school kids where they're at, but I think it's really going to kind of, they're really going to tune in when it matters to them, right? When it's relevant, and a lot of that high school, your high school four years is kind of when you're going to want to kind of circle back to this stuff, and, you know, you're probably not going to want to hear about trafficking or even understand what that means in sixth, seventh, eighth grade, but, you know, if you're maybe seeing that in 11th or 12th, and you've already had your Dove time, that, you know, you kind of missed that window. So, I'd love it if we could kind of creatively try to find more ways to hit those high school kids, just so they know what's available. I mean, how to end a relationship is just, is such useful knowledge for anyone, right? I mean, so I think it's, they're all really, really helpful skills, and I'd love to see more high school kids be a recipient of that.
Yeah. It's something we talk about a lot, of this mix of, you know, wanting to talk to students before something like this happens, so that we're preventing it, you know, with the middle school, but then also, how are we having these conversations when it is happening? And so, yeah, trying to find that balance of doing both.
Yeah. That's great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. QPS policies and practices regarding student information. Dr. Perkins.
Thank you. What's that?
All Alone.
All Alone today. I know. Okay. Thank you very much for having me tonight to talk about our policies and practices regarding access to students and student information. I do just want to begin by letting everyone know that obviously, in Quincy Public Schools, our first priority is student safety, always. So, there's obviously been, you know, a lot in the news in terms of immigration and things like that, but in Quincy Public Schools, student safety for all students is our absolute number-one priority. That's what we focus on. That's our goal every single day. Students cannot learn if they're not in a safe environment. I think we do a phenomenal job of creating a safe environment for our students, but I just wanted to make that clear before I begin the presentation. So, tonight, we're just going to talk about the goal, which is to provide equal access to education in a safe and supportive learning environment for all students regardless of their immigration status. And so, I'm just going to briefly go through the relevant laws that govern that, because this isn't something that's new for us. This is something we've been doing for years and years, and lots of the information that you are going to hear tonight is something that we have consistently implemented for years, for as long as I've been in the school system. So, I'll talk briefly about student records and student privacy, what are the exemptions to student privacy, our procedures, and then the things that we've done most recently in terms of our action steps. So, just to briefly go over, so, one of the biggest laws that governs student confidentiality is Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 76, Section 5, and in education in general, in this law, just briefly states that "Every person shall have a right to attend the public school in the town in which they reside. No person shall be excluded from or discriminated against in admissions to a public school. Schools must provide equal access to education to all students regardless of immigration or citizenship status, and schools must avoid policies that discourage or deny access to the school on the basis of immigration status." Another law that is extremely important and that we actually train our staff on every single year is FERPA, and so, it's the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act of 1974. It's a federal law that protects the privacy of students' educational records. And to sum it up, it basically, what it basically says is that schools cannot disclose either orally or in writing a student's personally identifiable information, meaning their name, their address, their social security number, their student number, their date of birth, or their mother's maiden name, you know, as a few examples, to third parties without the student's parent or guardian's specific informed consent unless there is a specific exception permitting disclosure, and we'll talk about what those are. And lastly, in terms of laws and regulations, we also follow Massachusetts Student Record Regulations, which is 603 CM423, Section 05. And again, just quickly sum it up, it basically says that schools are prohibited from giving either orally or in writing a student's personally identifiable information contained in education records to third parties without the specific informed written consent of a parent or guardian. So, these are things that have been in place for years and years and things that we at Quincy Public Schools take extremely seriously. We train our staff every single fall on these regulations, and the staff actually have to sign off that they have participated in the training. So, these things are all in place and have been at Quincy Public Schools. So, some of the exceptions to student privacy, so generally, FERPA and student record regulations prevent school districts from releasing any information contained in a student's educational record. Some of the exceptions are as followed. So, judicial order or subpoena, if we receive a judicial order or subpoena, where a lawfully issued judicial order or subpoena is presented, schools must make a reasonable effort to notify the parent or the student, if the student is 18 years old or older, of the order before complying with it to allow the parent an opportunity to seek a protective order or other relief in court. So, that's one exception to FERPA and student privacy. And so, when we give prior notification, those, prior notification is not allowed in a couple of circumstances or not required, and that is if there's a concern that the person involved in the order is involved in a terrorist act or other, you know, specified offenses in the regulation, or if the parent is a party to a court proceeding involving child abuse and or neglect or is involved in any legal actions against the school. So, those are the times where we would not provide the parent with a prior notification to a judicial warrant. Typically, that might involve like an abuse case, things like that. And so, the other exception to student privacy is for police and prosecutors, the Department of Children and Families, and the Health Department, only in cases that involve the health or the safety of the students in the building. And so, you know, one of the times, if it was a disease or something that may spread, you have to contact the Department of Public Health. If there is a DCF investigation, you know, that would be a time when we would need to release student information, and so, that would, you know, constitute an exemption. And the last exemption is directory information. So, we do release directory information. It means information contained in an education record of a student that would generally not be considered harmful or an invasion of privacy if disclosed. And so, some examples are student's name, phone number, grade level, dates of attendance, student's participation in officially recognized activities in sports, any honors or rewards that were received by a student. And I think a good example of when we do this is you've all seen in the Quincy Sun when the honor rolls are published. So, that's an example of directory information. So, parents and guardians may opt out of including their child's information in the directory by notifying the school district in writing within 30 days of the beginning of the academic year, and this is stated in the handbook and, you know, that is available for parents. So, now to talk about the procedures and how we would handle a third party or an outside person who is not a guardian or a parent of a student, how we would handle that if that person came to the school and requested access to a student. So, we have pretty specific procedures, and all principals have been directed to follow the following procedures. So, if someone were to show up at the school and, you know, the principals would immediately inform the person that they can neither confirm nor deny a student's personally identifiable information, so we would not give out student information, we would not even confirm that that student attended that school. The principal would inform the person that the protocol for all staff is to refer this inquiry to the superintendent's office as well as legal counsel and ask them to report to 34 Cottington Street. We do that on purpose because we do not want our principals getting into altercations or arguments with anybody that's showing up on the doorstep of the school. That's something that the superintendent or myself, we can handle here at Cottington. We can use a space here to kind of figure out what's going on. The principal will then immediately contact the superintendent or designee, who will discuss with legal counsel the best course of action. The principal will also immediately contact the parents or guardians of the student. The principal will request proper identification and make copies of the credentials so that we are able to review those with legal counsel. If the person has a warrant for an arrest, the principal would request a copy of the warrant and send it to the superintendent, which we would then immediately send to legal counsel. The person would need to have a valid judicial, not administrative, warrant authorizing the arrest. The warrant needs to be signed by a judge. Likewise, if they seek personally identifiable information regarding a student, it should have a valid subpoena or court order, and that should be also be immediately forwarded to the superintendent's office. Principals may ask the person to come back at a later time until such time that the scope of the warrant or the subpoena or court order can be confirmed with legal counsel. If the person does not present a judicial warrant, then they are not permitted to enter the school. And we are not asking principals or any staff to differentiate between a judicial warrant or an administrative warrant. That's why they would immediately send it to our office, and we would work with our legal counsel. That's what we have them for. And so, just to highlight some of the things that we've done so far, so, we have provided all principals with guidance documents and PowerPoints from the Attorney General's Office and all legal advisories that have been issued from our attorneys at Murphy-Hesse-Tumi. We have provided principals with the procedures that I just talked with you about a minute ago, should someone try to gain access to a student or a student's information. Principals and representatives from both high schools, the Behavioral Health Navigator and members of the student superintendent's leadership team, attended the guidance webinar provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We actually watched it in the professional development room. We've met individually and as a whole group with our principals to talk about the guidance and answer any questions. We've provided the guidance to all family liaisons who have been reaching out and supporting families with attendance and safety concerns, and family liaisons in collaboration with school counselors and the principals have worked with individual families to address these concerns. We have provided also resources to support families to our counselors. And finally, you do have a one-page document that's kind of a summary that we put together to be shared with staff, and so, the principals have shared that with their staff, so the staff know what the procedures and protocols are. But again, this is not something that we want our staff to be dealing with. We really want the message to be that if there's a concern, it should be immediately forwarded to us and to let us handle it. We don't want our principals or our staff, you know, getting involved in anything that we can take off their plate. And so, that, in a nutshell, is our student confidentiality and safety procedures. So, happy to answer any questions.
Question. Mrs. Lebo.
Not questions so much as a comment. Thank you very much, Dr. Perkins, for this. I've heard from several parents who are not parents of immigrants, who are very concerned about this and how everybody in the school would be traumatized. So, it's great. I think that you all knew what you're doing, and you've been doing it for years, and I think this information here going out to all staff, I don't know if there's some way we can get it out to everybody, you know, without being, I don't know, overkill, but I think that there are parents who are concerned that not only are those immigrant children going to be really traumatized, but if somebody else sees somebody being taken out, every kid in the school is going to be traumatized, every teacher is going to be traumatized, everybody will be traumatized. And so, I think it's really important that everybody in our community understands this, and I'm not sure what the right way would be to get that information out.
If we can look at that. Right, because I...
You wouldn't want to have to give them something like this.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to cause, because right now, we're doing very well with our families, attendance-wise, and working individually with families that may have concerns, but I do understand that the general perception out there, what I wouldn't want to do, and I know I've gotten feedback from other superintendents where they send out a letter, and it may be misinterpreted and causes panic, and then all of a sudden, people stop coming to school. So, it is a balance, and we're trying to strike that balance and thread that needle. But we definitely don't want to cause additional panic, and I can say right now in meeting with our principals, we're in a really good position right now with supporting students and families, and our attendance levels seem to be very, very good right now. And we're obviously addressing concerns with individual families and working closely with them and assuring them of their safety and that we will have their safety as our primary concern every day, and that it's okay to come to school, and we'll make sure that it's safe. But that we do worry about sending something out, especially with our EL population, where something, even though it's interpreted, may be misinterpreted, and we're super concerned about that, because we have heard from other superintendents and us superintendent's groups where they have sent out letters they thought would be helpful.
And they were scary.
But it caused a panic throughout the district.
That's understandable.
So, we are concerned about that, too.
My other concern here is, we don't have pedestrian traps in all of our schools. Once this person's in the building, and you're asking the principal to get identification and take copies of it in the building, I just worry about them in the building.
So, just generally speaking, and the Attorney General's Office spoke on this, if it is a federal law enforcement official, it's very, very unlikely that they would just show up. It would be something they would probably do through the police department, collaboration with the police department, or they would give us notice, particularly with a school. You know, something happening outside of school or at a residence, that's something different, but certainly coming into a school and breaching kind of the sanctity of a school to search for students, I think, is something that would be beyond the pale and something that would be very, very unlikely to happen. But we are prepared in the case that it does happen, but obviously, if that person did get in our school, security is already well-trained in the response to that, which is, they immediately get the principal, and the principal calls us, and we immediately respond to the school and would engage that individual and ask them to come to Cottington to take the discussion out of the school, and then engage with them, engage with their supervisors, and if necessary, engage with our legal counsel and potentially seek injunctive relief, immediate injunctive relief to stop the disruption that would cause to the educational environment, not just for that student, that family. But as you said, other students would be present and see this. It would be very, very disturbing.
Teachers, everybody in the building would be.
Through the entire community. So, it's that serious where we would do everything and empower it to make sure that something like that did not happen.
I'm really glad we had this presentation, because I know you've been doing this all along, but it's just really nice to have the comfort of knowing that you're on top of it.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Three questions for you, Aaron.
Sure.
I'll ask all three questions, and you can answer. So, the three questions are, is it the national issues and state guidance that prompted the emphasis on this guidance is number one? Number two is, how often do third parties seek access? And number three is, does any of this need to be codified by the school committee as policy?
So, yes, it was definitely the, I think Mrs. Lebo might have requested that this be added to the agenda for discussion because of the guidance and obviously, you know, the discussion out in the world today. But in terms of third parties, it's very rare. I would say hardly ever, you know, do we have people coming that we don't know about that we wouldn't already be aware of. So, that's, very, very rare. I honestly can't even think of an instance off the top of my head where that...
I honestly can't even think of an instance off the top of my head where that's happened.
Yeah.
And again, we would deflect them, we would have them come to the superintendent, the principals would never let a random third-party person into there, they just wouldn't.
If it's an official like that, like a law enforcement official, the general policy and practice in the law enforcement community is to always reach out to the local Quincy Police first, so as to minimize, if not completely eliminate, any disruption to the educational environment. And whatever they would need would happen outside of school, so that there isn't a disruption to school. That's with regard to in-person requests. We do get subpoenas for records, but that would run the gamut from special education hearings to divorce hearings, and that would include a third-party outside person that we deal with regularly. But, with regard to someone showing up to school to seek a student or to pull a student out, that does not happen.
I'm sorry, what was your third question?
Does any of it need to be codified as school committee policy?
We do have school committee policy, which basically says all of the things that I just said, that's, you know, in terms of student records and...
I didn't know if anything needed to be updated.
I don't think so, I mean, I think it's our policy, we looked at it before this, it's pretty clear. So, and again, I would just add too, we do not collect immigration information, we don't ask for it, we don't collect it. So, even if, you know, if, which I think is completely unlikely that it would ever happen, that someone would show up at one of our schools, we can't even give it to them if they asked it, we don't know. We have no idea anyone's immigration status. So, we don't have it, we don't collect it, we don't ask it, and so, you know, I think it's important for people to know that, that we cannot, we wouldn't, and we cannot, because we actually don't even know.
Got it. Thank you.
Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you so much for the presentation, I know this is concerning to, Mrs. Lebo, comment, we get questions from parents, it's very concerning, this is great information to know. It's great to know that our teachers are not only trained now, but trained every year on this, so it's not something that's new, they've been, over the years, always trained on it, so that's great to know. This one-pager, is this something that maybe, like, we could have available for principals to hand out to concerned parents who maybe went to them and was looking for information, that we could give them what the protocol is, so that maybe the principals could have this on hand? I mean, this being part of our school committee material will probably be on the website anyway, but, so I was saying that if the principals could have it, maybe they could just hand it out.
Yeah, so the principals do have it, so, we gave that to the principals a couple weeks ago now, when that, like, when all this kind of first initially came out, we actually gave that all to the principals, and we, and also the family liaisons. And so, we have instructed the principals that when parents are saying they're afraid to come to school, or, you know, things like that, that they can go through the procedures, like what would happen. So, you know, in the very unlikely instance, and I really want to be clear, that we really do not think that this is likely, and neither did the people from the Attorney General's office, I mean, this would be extreme. And so, in the very unlikely instance that maybe something like that did happen, that, you know, they could reassure parents and say, but this is the procedure that we would follow, and you would immediately be notified. So, we would not let someone into the building, you would immediately be notified. So, they have been making those phone calls and having those meetings, and so, they've actually had this for a bit, which is why the superintendent said, we think that it has, it is kind of calming down, and, you know, students are coming back to school, and we're making that outreach, you know, to those families that are concerned, and going through exactly what you just said. So, the principals do have it, they can give it out, they've had had it, now the teachers have it, so we're hoping we've covered all of our bases there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Pertios.
Thank you for this, thank you for...
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
Thanks. Thank you for laying this out for parents, I know that there's a lot, as my colleagues have said, a lot of parents that are concerned about this, so I just, to be really clear, by third-party, we mean ICE, right? Any ICE agent that were to come to a building, they're considered a third-party. Okay, I just wanted to make that clear here, too, for people who may not understand that. So, have there been any instances at all so far, since the federal mandate or anything like that?
In schools?
Yes.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, no, no, anyone trying, nothing like that at all?
No.
Okay, so, zero so far. So, but we did see the effects of it with students being out, and students coming to school with passports in their backpacks, I heard anecdotally that type of stuff was happening.
We don't, we've, I haven't gotten, I heard that anecdotally from not a teacher, so, I have not heard that, that's not been relayed to me from any principals, and I don't think the superintendent has heard that either.
We asked the principals that, too, at our recent meeting, and they have not heard that, so we're not sure where that information is coming from. There is a lot of disinformation out there, and unfortunately, it's social media-based, which is part of the problem, because there are social media groups out there causing disinformation and panic among families, particularly immigrant families, which is making it even worse. So, we're trying to make sure that we work directly with those families, so that we're dispelling all of this misinformation, and making sure that they know that they're safe to come to school.
Right.
So, it's hard to tell what is real and what isn't, but we have not heard that students are coming to school with their passports.
Okay, so, I guess my point more was that families are feeling the effects of it, especially when we had the absences. I did also actually hear of an incident which kind of broke my heart, that, so, we have a lot of community police officers, and we have, you know, community police that are in and around our buildings, and they've worked hard to create those relationships at the schools and with the students. I heard that at one of the schools, Officer Don may have had a visit, and a lot of kids went home and told families, there was a police officer in my building today, and so, I think that we do have some messaging to do where kids, whether or not they're scared on their own, are hearing it at their home from their families, they're kind of getting that second-hand anxiety about it. And I'm just wondering if there's any additional ways we can support the students that are in the classrooms and the teachers, so the teachers got this information, which is great. But also, are we, are we and can we give any kind of social, emotional support, and maybe it's more of a question from Mara, but, any talking points or any ways to kind of help students that are feeling that in their classroom more so, and just, you know, not every teacher is trained in how to handle this, this is heavy stuff, and really serious anxiety for families. So, I don't know that everyone's automatically trained or knows how to do that, but I feel like just supporting those kids and the fear that they may feel, even just seeing a community police officer walk into their building is going to set off some alarms for them. So, I'm just wondering how to support that portion of it, where it's not the law, it's more just how kids are feeling about that, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, if we, I did not hear about the issue with our Officer Don, if we did hear about that, we would have addressed it, I did not hear about that. And, so, if people are hearing issues relative to concerns about our offices being mistaken for something other than the community support that they're there to do, Officer Don is part of the DAIR program, I'll certainly try and, I mean, if I know the school, that would be helpful.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to share that, it's just more, I'm just more using it as, like an example that I'm feeling like if that's the case, that could very well be the case anytime they see a police, a community police officer now, so, and we've worked hard to create those bonds, so I would hate to see that.
I'm surprised by it, because Officer Don is so well-known in the district, and he's in all of our schools, and he has been since the beginning of the school year. So, it's just a surprise to me that someone would see Officer Don or any of our school resource officers who are very familiar with the schools. We take our school resource officers and their roles very seriously, and we make sure for this very reason that they're well-known in the schools in which they work, and they're well-known in the community, so that when a student sees a police officer like Officer Don or our school resource officers at the high school, at the middle school, they're comfortable even approaching them to ask for assistance. So, to hear that students were frightened by Officer Don, that's obviously concerning to me, I'd like to address it right away, and know what school that is at, because it shouldn't be happening, obviously.
Right, we have a lot of families moving in and moving out, too, so it may just be a student didn't, isn't familiar.
And I just want to make sure the information is reliable, too, that this is something that's actually happening.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to...
So, that we can address it, because I can tell you right now that, from speaking with our principals, our students and families, with a few exceptions, and we're working with those exceptions, are extremely comfortable now coming to school. And I just want to make sure that whatever message we send out doesn't make the situation worse, and then we're back to trying to comfort families and reassure families that school is safe, when we're at that point now.
Right.
That's my only concern, and I just wanted to address the Officer Don situation, because that is extremely concerning to me, especially not having known about it, because I would have addressed it immediately, because we don't want our students being frightened by Quincy Police Officers in the city, we want the opposite effect, and that's why we've engaged the Quincy Police and the Quincy Police Assistors across the board at all levels of our schools.
Right.
And so, I'll just, you know, we'll look into that situation and make sure that it's addressed.
Okay, yeah, no, and please take from my comment more that it's more the anxiety is there, right? So, if there's just ways we can support these students in feeling that, even, you know, I get that, but also, you know, and there's other federal mandates that have come down about, you know, LGBTQ students and things like that as well, so I'm just talking about just the in-general feeling of anxiety that students are having in general may just be higher, and teachers may hear about that from students first, because they're at their point of contact, so, just if there's any support additional, we could do, that would be great.
And Mara has actually shared, I know she did share, and she's been talking with her counselors and has shared, I don't know if she's...
Yeah, she's motioning back there.
She has shared a lot of resources with the counselors to help with just that.
Yeah, I did send out, like, it's kind of like a one-page thing about some talking points that counselors could use with kids and teachers could use with kids, just about keeping the routine, I'm glad to see you're here today, you know, just reinforcing that they're safe, you know, kind of basic, but it is a way to kind of check in, to make sure that kids are doing okay. And the families that called and reached out to principals, we made sure that the family liaisons had some guidance as well, to speak with those families, to make sure that kids were attending. So, we're not trying to offer, like, legal advice or anything like that, it's more just about reassuring kids that they're safe, that parents should send their children to school, and to give the classroom teachers just something to say in response, you know, it is just a nice supportive response, that will make a huge difference.
That's great, that's exactly what I was talking about, thank you, I appreciate it, I'm glad that you've done that, thank you, and I'm not surprised, but thank you for that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Mayor.
I'd just like to make a few remarks, some directly to schools, some other, otherwise, but, the city of Quincy has been working with ICE for years, they're a federal agency, and we follow the law, and we have, at the police department, arrests, and it's determined that it's an illegal immigrant, ICE is contacted. If it's a serious case, ICE may come in and take that person, if not, the normal process follows. So, we do follow the law with the federal government and that, and we have people embedded with the DEA, there is a relationship, number one. Number two is, you know, elections have consequences, and I don't want to get into liberal-conservative debate, Republicans versus Democrats, but this president said he was going to do certain things, and one of those things he's talked about, getting rid of the Department of Education, I'm not taking a stand on that, but I want to remind people that, you know, essentially, Congress controls the purse strings. So, my interest is that we continue to get funded with Title I, food services, and all those important services that we provide to our kids. Massachusetts leads the country K through 12 in education in standards. In Quincy, I would argue, is the best in, as far as urban districts go, we take it serious, and we support the families, we invest in education. So, I hope everybody can just calm down, I don't know where some of this is coming from, because I haven't seen, there's a lot of stuff out there for sure, as you mentioned, social media, but I haven't seen any schooling issue where someone's gone in to drag a kid out of a school anywhere, so I haven't seen that. So, I hope everyone can just calm down a little bit. I know our police resource officers do a great job for us, yes, they are building relationships, but they also are another set of eyes and ears, let's not forget some of the incidents we've had in schools around the country, there's bad people out there that do bad things, so, we always have to be cognizant of that as well. So, again, we work very closely, we're an entity of the state, you know, we're a district of the state, we follow their rules, regulations, and do I think we need another layer of rules and regulations for the government? I don't think we do, we do it well here in Massachusetts, but don't cut our funding. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say two things. One, thank you for bringing this forward, for suggesting that we see this, because we are getting a lot of questions, and people want to know what we're doing, and it's reassuring to know that we already do all these things. And also, I think to the point of not really amplifying this information out there to create panic is really important, because, I mean, it's like when you have your kids and they fall, and if you, if you go, oh my God, then they're going to start crying. If you look at them and say, oh, you're going to be fine, everything's good, then it gives a level of calmness, right? So, I think we need to approach this in a way that we're not getting ahead of ourselves, we're not seeing the issues, we hope that we won't, but we're supporting them with conversation, and we're supporting them with these policies that we have in place, so, it's good for us to hear it, so that we have answers when people do call us. So, thank you for bringing it forward and talking about it, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks. That's me. And next on the agenda, we have Mr. Mulaney and QPS FY25 grant booklet, correct? Yeah?
We've distributed the grant booklet to all of you, I believe it was going to be referred to committee if there were any questions on it, but again, it's the same one we produce year after year. The major change this year in the grants was a reduction in Title I, which was not what we're looking for, 300,000, and obviously, the elimination of all the ESER funding, which was of great help to us, but we're in good shape fiscally with our current budget as well as all the grant funding, so...
Okay, so we just have to refer to budget and finance, okay? Referring, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mulaney.
Thank you all.
Next on the agenda is MSBA Accelerated Repair Program Statements of Interest, Superintendent Mowli.
Thank you, everyone, and I'm happy to report that we will be submitting four projects for potential for consideration by the MSBA for the accelerated repair program, I do have to thank, of course, the mayor and Paul Heinz and the entire...
Maintenance Department for their work in identifying the areas that would qualify for the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program. Of course, the following are, and we need an individual vote on each one, but the following are the Point Webster Middle School Windows and Doors and Roof, next is the Parker Elementary School Roof, the Broad Meadows Middle School Roof, and the Atlantic Middle School Roof. There's no guarantee that we'll get any or all, but we're trying to, we're hopeful to get them all, but certainly, we need to submit them, otherwise, we would have no chance at all of getting them. So, since all of these projects are eligible for potential MSBA Accelerated Repair Program money to pay for them, we would request that each one of these projects have an individual roll-call vote to be submitted for the MSBA's consideration.
Okay, so, we're going to vote on each one. First would be the Point Webster Middle School Windows and Doors and Roof, do we have a motion to accept? A motion by Mr. Begoli, second by Mrs. Hubley, roll-call vote.
Mr. Begoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Gattro.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios.
Yes.
And Meaco.
Yes.
And next on the list, we have the Atlantic Middle School Roof, motion by Mr. Gattro, second by Mrs. Lebo, roll-call vote.
Mr. Begoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gattro.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios.
Yes.
And Meaco.
Yes.
Next on the list is the Broad Meadows Middle School Roof, motion by Mr. Gattro, second by Mrs. Hubley, roll-call vote, please.
Mr. Begoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gattro.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios.
Yes.
And Meaco.
Yes.
And next on the list, we have the Atlantic Middle School Roof, motion by Mr. Gattro, second by Mr. Begoli, roll-call vote.
Mr. Begoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Gattro.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios.
Yes.
And Meaco.
Yes.
Thank you all.
If I might on this subject?
Thank you.
I think I might say something on this subject.
Yes, of course.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank superintendent and the team and Laura for all the work that goes into this, also Commissioner Heinz and the team from Public Buildings, they work very hard, we have a great partnership, when you look at the work that's been done over the last several years, working in concert together as a city, and of course, being very aggressive of course, being very aggressive at the state level for these grants. So, and I, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say the SBA, because we have worked very well with the SBA over the years. We don't fool around. We hire the best in consultants and engineers, and, and they respect that. But we also know there's limited funds for around the state, so they do the best they can with what they have. So it's important we continue to get in the queue and fight for the projects. But I want to thank everybody that's, does all the work on it.
I want to reiterate what the mayor said. I, you know, I work with some of the school districts, and they don't, they don't get this stuff done. They just don't get this stuff done. And the cooperation between the city side and the school, the school side has been phenomenal in Quincy. And when I tell people the kind of stuff we've had, they're shocked that the city has been able to do that much stuff. And it really is because of the professionalism of both sides of the thing. So I really appreciate the fact that the city side works so well with the, the school system, and I really want to thank you all for that work.
Next, we have a consent agenda, roll-call vote, for the items Meeting Minutes, Donations, Grant, Student Travel.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Hubley, second by Mr. Begoli.
On the motion.
On the motion, Mrs. Lebo.
Looking at the out-of-state travel for the trips, $200 for a Quincy High School student to go on the exact same trip, $496. Is it because of the numbers?
Kids because fundraising.
Because fundraising.
Students fundraise.
And the North Quincy High kids don't fundraise?
Not to the same extent. They also have a much smaller group going, eight students versus 32 students.
It's kind of outrageous.
We do work to make sure that any student wants to go will go regardless of whether they pay.
They are going together.
It is.
They didn't fundraise together. Okay, it was just, it was just a very odd, it was a very odd thing to read when I was going through them. So thank you very much for that sort of explanation.
On the motion?
Yeah, please.
I know we grouped these, and it certainly makes sense for us for efficiency, but I did not want to go by and not say $80,000 for grant of telecommunications. Rob Hill continues to invest in Quincy in so many ways, and I just want to state that publicly. And also, for the, the grants down further, I know the team works hard on the grant programs. Thank the leadership team and everybody involved in applying for those. Thank you.
And also, Boston Scientific, too, for their donations. It's great.
And we're going to send thank-you notes from the school committee to them for the gifts.
That's approved, yes.
Yes, thank you. Roll call. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Begoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Pertios.
Yes.
And Mayaco.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you to our student liaisons as well. Thank you both.